I would like to call the City Council meeting to order. Tonight, Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Marsh.
Here.
Kenyon.
Here.
Petty.
Here.
Tenet.
Here.
Adams. Mayor Jordan.
Here. Joining them, sign and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First order of business we have tonight is the consent agenda. Number one, approval of the October 21st, 2014 City Council meeting minutes. Number two, resolution to award bid number 14-55 and to approve purchase of four irrigation reels from Keeling Company of North Little Rock, Arkansas in the amount of 144,000 plus applicable taxes for the city by Old Solids Management site. Number three, resolution to award bid number 14-58 to Truck Centers of Arkansas and to approve the purchase of one freightliner, 114 SD tri-axle dump truck in the amount of 127,620 dollars for use by the Transportation Division and to approve a budget adjustment. Number four, resolution to award bid number 14-59 to Summit Truck Group Lowell, Arkansas, and to approve the purchase of two International 7300 dump trucks with the Henderson Belly Plows in the total amount of 287,516.56 for use by the Transportation Division and to approve a budget adjustment. Number five, resolution to approve the purchase of one Volvo MCT 125 Skid steer loader with soil conditioner from Huggin Hall Equipment of Springdale, Arkansas pursuant to the Houston-Galveston Area Council contract in the amount of 65,634 dollars and to approve a budget adjustment. Number six, resolution to approve a budget adjustment recognizing hazmat services revenue received by the Fire Department through October 2014. Number seven, resolution to exercise the five-year option to renew the agreement with Waste Management of Arkansas Incorporated for Solid Waste Transfer and Disposal Services. Number eight, a resolution to approve and certify the participation of Pacific Fed Group USA Incorporated in the Arkansas Tax Back Program and to agree to authorize DFNA to refund the city sales tax back to Pacific Fed Group USA Incorporated. I will entertain a motion to accept consent.
Second.
We have a motion and second to accept the consent agenda's read. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Okay. Under old business, we have no old business. Under new business, number one, an ordinance resoning that property described rezoning petition RZN 14-4848 for approximately .29 acres located at 940 West Maple Street from P1 Institutional to RMF 40 Residential Multifamily, four units per acre. Kit.
It ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the classification of the following described property from P1 Institutional to RMF-40 Residential Multifamily, 40 units per acre, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here to and made apart hereof, and Section Two, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning changes provided in Section One.
Chairman.
Mayor and Council, this property is located at the northwest corner of Maple Street and Oakland Avenue, north of the university. It's developed with the Chi Omega Sorority House. The property is currently split zoned, the south half being RMF 40, which is our Residential Multifamily, 40 units per acre designation, and the north half is zoned P1 Institutional. A sorority house is not permitted in use in institutional zoning district, and what we can find is simply that these, this property has been split zoned for decades and decades. Staff's opinion, the applicant's request to rezone the entire property to RMF 40 is an appropriate zoning designation for this property. It's consistent with our city plan 2030 and our city neighborhood area designation. It's compatible with surrounding development patterns, including the University of Arkansas campus and on and off campus student housing in this vicinity. Planning Commission voted eight to zero in support of this application, and staff is also recommending in favor.
Okay. What questions do we have for Jeremy from the council? Anything? Okay. Is there any public comment on this? So now bring it back to the council.
I move we go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described and rezoning petition RZN 14-4848 for approximately .29 acres located at 940 West Maple Street from P1 Institutional to RMF 40 Residential Multifamily, 40 units per acre.
Move to go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described and rezoning petition RZN 14-4848 for approximately .29 acres located at 940 West Maple Street from P1 Institutional to RMF 40 Residential Multifamily, 40 units per acre.
Is there any final comments from the council on this? Anything? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Number two, an ordinance rezoning that property described and rezoning petition RZN 14-4850 for approximately 4.96 acres located along the north side of Martin Luther King Boulevard between Government Hill avenues from I-1 Heavy Commercial Light Industrial to C-2 Thoroughfare Commercial. Kit.
It ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from I-1 Heavy Commercial Light Industrial to C-2 Thoroughfare Commercial, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here to and made apart hereof, and Section Two, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section One above.
Kit.
I think that we received an email from the applicant, and I'd asked him to come up and address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, Mayor, members of the City Council. A pleasure to be here. I'm Stephen Giles. I'm an agent for the property owners to rezone Hannah's Landing, and as you know, I'm also Walmart's land use council developer, potential developer. I wanted to thank you for considering our request to move this to December 2nd, and really the reason is to give us an opportunity to work further with city staff and to come up with a plan that would, we think would be very beneficial for you to understand what this project is going to be like, and we're trying to figure out a way to do that, but it just need a little bit of time, and we request that break.
Okay. Jeremy, is there?
So essentially, you have two options here, it sounds like. You can leave it on the first reading, and then you had to go to the next meeting and to the second, second meet, third reading on the, on the December 2nd, or you could table this item for the December 2nd meeting so it will not be on your following November meeting.
I move we table it.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and second.
To table to the December, first meeting in December, which is the second.
Any discussion from the council on this?
Before we do that, was there any members of the public that might?
Well, I was fixing to ask that. Is there anyone from the county, publicly like to address this? Now, this is going to be tabled, and it'll be back in December to help me out.
December 2nd, I think is the date.
So. All right. Seeing now, bring it back to the council. We have a motion and second to type, correct? So, yes, Mark.
Just some discussion on tabling this. I hope this will give the opportunity for the developer to look at zoning alternatives that would meet both the needs of the planned master plans adjacent to this property. We have the downtown master plan, the Walker Park master plan, and the Fayette Junction master plan. We also have made a commitment in City Council to look at our form-based options whenever we're looking at rezoning. Rezoning is important because in the event that this specific retail operation doesn't go in there and then it's rezoned, there's no guarantee that something else wouldn't come in there that might be less desirable, and so when I look at a zoning change, I'm not looking specifically at a specific retail operation, but I'm looking at the impact, the total impact that I have whenever I'm looking in the long term as we're planning for this specific piece of property. So I wanted to express that because I think that there's all sorts of opportunity to work together in a wonderful compromise, looking at our form-based zoning options where everyone can get an ideal opportunity with this property and enhance the vision that the individuals that spent many hours in the master planning through charrettes, and I hope that we can meet the recommendations of the master plans that are adjacent to this property, and I feel confident we can. If you look at other cities that have taken the opportunity to do this with this specific retailer, there's certainly some options where they have worked very well with the municipalities, and I hope that we'll have the opportunity to do the same.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify with Kit, when we are considering a zoning request, we're not actually allowed to consider any project plan specifically, only the allowable uses in that zone.
If in fact, this comes through as, as it is right now with the C-2, you really don't look at the project access, as Alderman Kenyon's talked about, you look at what could be built there under C-2, and of course, many, many things could be built under C-2, and so we don't really look at that. That's what the PZD was giving us in the past. We haven't seen very many of them now, but it's still a viable option. That's the only way, I think, that you could really look at some actual potential development is if they would go that way, it's a little more expensive for them to prepare something like that, and so for some reason, we haven't seen very many PZDs.
Yeah, and PZD, we looked at a lot of those when I was on the council in the early days, and they'll, they'll show you what they're going to put in, how it looks, and you can give input to it if it comes forward as a PZD. If it doesn't, then you're looking at C-2 zoning, and that's about it.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, sure.
I just want to make sure that, I guess, the applicants understand, my opinion, and understand that Ward Two as, as a group up here, that we're very unified about how this property gets developed, not necessarily what the uses of the property are, but the form of the property. And, you know, I for one am very cognizant of the kinds of logistical challenges that will have to be solved if you do this the way that Mark and I are asking for, but I think they can be solved, and I think that if there's a good faith effort to do that, that we can solve for yes and come up with something that you can get unanimous support for, because I've seen you do it in other communities. So that's the attitude I'm taking, but I want to underscore that I feel very strongly about it, so let's solve for yes and figure it out.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. We have a motion and second to type. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Okay. Number three, an ordinance approving vacation 14-4849 submitted by Bates and Associates for property located at the northwest corner of Zion Road and Waterside Court to vacate existing utility easement. Kit.
Whereas the City Council has the authority under ACA 1454-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes, and whereas the City Council has determined that the following described portion of the planted utility easement is not required for corporate purposes, now therefore it being ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following portions of utility easement described in Exhibit B attached here to and made apart hereof, and Section Two, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk along with the map attached and labeled Exhibit A shall be filed in the office of recorder of the county and recorded in the deed records of the county, and Section Three, that this vacation approval is subject to the following condition of approval: Number one, any damage or relocation of existing facilities shall be at the owner developer's expense.
Chairman.
This is a request to vacate a 15-foot wide utility easement that currently splits two lots containing about one acre. The property is located off of Waterside Court, which is north of Zion Road between the Lowe's Home Improvement Store and Veterans Park. It's an office development. The property, as I mentioned, the intent is to develop this entire one acre parcel, and in order to be able to take advantage of the full parcel, this request for the utility easement vacation has been submitted. Planning Commission voted eight to zero, and staff is also in support. There are no utilities within the easement.
Okay. What questions do we have for Jeremy on this? Okay. Okay. A public comment do we have on this? Okay. I'll bring it back to the council.
Should we move to the second reading?
Second.
We have a motion and second to move to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Shopmar.
An ordinance approving VAC 14-4849 submitted by Bates and Associates for property located at the northwest corner of Zion Road and Waterside Court to vacate an existing utility easement.
I move we move to the third and final reading.
We have a motion and second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Shopmar.
An ordinance approving VAC 14-4849 submitted by Bates and Associates for property located at the northwest corner of Zion Road and Waterside Court to vacate an existing utility easement.
Any final comments from the council on this? Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Okay, thank you. Number four, an ordinance approving vacation 14-4853 submitted by city staff property located at the intersection of James Street and Mount Comfort Road to vacate existing street right of way. Kit.
Whereas the City Council has the authority under ACA 1454-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes, and whereas the City Council has determined that the following described portion of the planted street right of way is not required for corporate purposes, now therefore it being ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following portions of the street right of way as described in Exhibit B attached here to and made apart hereof, Section Two, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk along with the map attached and labeled Exhibit A shall be filed in the office of recorder of the county and recorded in deed records of the county, and Section Three, that this vacation approval is subject to the following conditions of approval: Any damage or relocation of existing facilities shall be at the owner developer's expense. Notice that means the city's expense.
Okay. Chairman.
This property is a portion of right of way recently abandoned during the Garland Avenue improvements. It contained, used to contain the Mount Comfort intersection with Garland Avenue. That realignment project at the intersection of Garland, James Street, and Mount Comfort Road essentially created an unused piece of property. When the city was acquiring right of way for this project, we presented to you a resolution approving a settlement saving the city nearly $31,000 and also allowed us to obtain a utility easement, essentially in trade for this right of way. And that section of the resolution is included in your packet on page 159 stating that the obligation to adopt this vacation was there when we approved that settlement essentially with the adjacent property owner. That street has been obviously relocated, there's a new traffic signal, it's no longer being utilized for corporate purposes or city purposes, and staff is recommending the vacation of that right of way. Planning Commission also voted eight to zero, and we're recommending in favor.
What questions do we have for Jeremy on this? Okay. We have any public comment on this? Okay. Seeing now, bring it back to the City Council.
Move to spin the rules, go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Shopmar.
An ordinance approving VAC 14-4853 submitted by city staff for property located at the intersection of James Street and Mount Comfort Road to vacate existing street right of way. And I do want to say this was negotiated by a former assistant city attorney when we were getting the right of way for the extension of Garland and saved us a considerable amount of money in exchange for this, which we really don't need, so it was a good deal for the city, and we need to fulfill what we said we're going to do.
Okay.
I move we go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Shopmar.
An ordinance approving VAC 14-4853 submitted by city staff for property located at the intersection of James Street and Mount Comfort Road to vacate an existing street right of way.
Any final comments from the council on this? Good, all right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Okay. Number five, an ordinance to waive the requirements of formal competitive bidding and to approve a cost share agreement. The Arkansas-Missouri Railroad for railroad crossing signal improvements at the Dixon Street Crossing in amount not to exceed $250,000 and to authorize Amendment Number Two to the licensing agreement with the Arkansas-Missouri Railroad to facilitate the construction of the Zollaghee Trail, Town Branch Trail, and Cato Springs Trail across railroad property. Kit.
Whereas the city and the Arkansas-Missouri Railroad have enjoyed an excellent partnership in developing the city's trail system on railroad property, and whereas the expansion of the city's trail system will require new trails to cross additional property owned by the Arkansas-Missouri Railroad, and the railroad has agreed to grant perpetual license to the city for these crossings at no further cost, and whereas the city of Fayetteville and the Arkansas-Missouri Railroad also seek to improve the safety of the railroad crossing at Dixon Street by installing gate arms for the sidewalks and roadway, and the city agrees that sharing in the cost of these safety improvements is beneficial to the Fayetteville residents and visitors, now therefore it being ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby finds that such circumstances constitute an exceptional situation where competitive bidding is not feasible or practical, and therefore waives the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizes the mayor to sign a cost share agreement with the Arkansas-Missouri Railroad for railroad crossing signal upgrades at the Dixon Street Crossing in amount not to exceed $250,000. Section Two, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby authorizes the mayor to sign Amendment Number Two to the license and agreement with the Arkansas-Missouri Railroad to facilitate the construction of the Zollaghee, Town Branch, and Cato Springs Trails across the railroad property.
Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Kit really summed it up well. As, as we've been enjoying a relationship with the Arkansas-Missouri Railroad since 2008, allowing many of our trail connections, we went to them to add three more sections, the Zollaghee, Town Branch, and Cato Springs, primarily the south side where we'd be crossing the active line. They came back to us and said what we really want to do Dixon Street and make it safer and add the gates, and so this is, we've kind of gone back and forth for quite some time, and this is the agreement we've come up with.
Mayor, I'd like to thank Matt for his long work on that. He's been working with the railroad quite a bit. We were determined to make sure that we would get all the trail crossings that we needed, and so he checked very carefully on that and has secured their agreement to give them to us with licenses so that in the future, we won't have a problem when we extend our trails according to our master trail plan, and so not only are we increasing the safety for our citizens, but also we're getting our trails. So Matt, I think you did a good job on this, and that's.
Great job. Any other questions from that? Any public comment on this? Okay, seeing now, I'll bring it back to the council.
We suspend the rules and go to the second reading?
Second.
A motion and second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Shopmar.
An ordinance to waive the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approve a cost share agreement with the Arkansas-Missouri Railroad for railroad crossing signal improvements at the Dixon Street Crossing in the amount not to exceed $250,000 and to authorize Amendment Number Two to the license and agreement with the Arkansas-Missouri Railroad to facilitate the construction of the Zollaghee, Town Branch, and Cato Springs Trails across the railroad property.
Okay.
Move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion and second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Shopmar.
An ordinance to waive the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approve a cost share agreement with the Arkansas-Missouri Railroad for railroad crossing signal improvements at the Dixon Street Crossing in amount not to exceed $250,000 and to authorize Amendment Number Two to the license and agreement with the Arkansas-Missouri Railroad to facilitate the construction of the Zollaghee, Town Branch, and Cato Springs Trails across the railroad property.
This has been a long time coming, y'all. An intersection down there on Dixon, I mean, the crossing down on Dixon Street is one of the most dangerous crossings, not only in the city but the state of Arkansas, something that they've been working on for about 10 years, so Matt did a great job, and it's going to make this, you know, much safer city with that. Okay, any other final comments on this? All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Okay, number six, a resolution amending the master street plan by removing the section of future collector's street between Oakland-Zion Road and Altus Drive as described and depicted in the attached map.
There's a development planned between Oakland-Zion Road and Altus Road. This is east of the city limits, actually within our planning area. It's about a little over 16 acres. The request here is not for the overall development, but essentially is a request The request here is not for the overall development, but essentially is a request to amend our master street plan. If you'll look on page two thirty-four, you can see the intent of the master street plan that the council adopted in our last update was to provide an east-west collector's street between Oakland Zion Road connecting to Altus and then eventually all the way to the east, to the, to the minor arterial there. The, that master street plan was complied with, with the development there west, I'm sorry, east of the minor arterial, and with this particular collector's street, we felt like it would provide that east-west connectivity. This eight-lot subdivision is a large lot subdivision on individual septic systems, as I mentioned, it is outside the, outside the city limits. In the designated collector's street, the differences here between what's proposed, which is a local street connection, would be roughly nine feet, fifty-nine feet of right-of-way is required for a collector's street section. A fifty-foot right-of-way is required for a local street section. The actual street is a, instead of a thirty-foot wide section, thirty-foot wide section with a collector's street allows for it intersections, turn lanes in the future without widening the street, so there's no disturbance, you simply re-stripe it. You don't have to actually widen the street. It also allows for either bike lanes or parallel parking without having to widen the street, it just allows that within the development itself, depending upon the use of that, of that property. The applicant's proposing to amend the master street plan, essentially downgrading that from a collector to a local street standard and build simply a two-lane street cross-section within fifty feet of right-of-way. And you, as you'll see if it is approved, what the master street plan would be amended to do is take out the collector's street between Oakland Zion Road and Altus Drive. Planning commission supported this request as part of the preliminary plat consideration when they approved the preliminary plat. It was approved seven to, seven to one with Commissioner Kyle Cook voting no. Staff felt like the east-west collector's street was needed and important in this area to maintain east-west connectivity. As you all know, that's one of our hardest things to achieve in this, in the city is east-west connectivity, and we felt maintaining that through the collector's street standard is important. I will say, I'd be remiss to say that the applicant is providing east-west connectivity with their proposal, it's simply a local street section. We felt it was important to maintain a collector's street standard because we do feel like as the property around this area continues to develop, we'll see continued pressure on the street sections, our street network in this area.
Okay, what questions do we have for Jeremy on this?
So, in downgrading the street, what we're essentially sacrificing is the bike lanes, is that correct?
And? The, the bike lanes would not be separated bike lanes, so it would be a local street section, which generally lowers speed and so traffic, bicycles are within the traffic. So, you wouldn't see a designated bike lanes, it would simply, you know, if it were ever marked, likely won't be marked because it doesn't go anywhere at this point in time, it's simply a, a connection within this eight-lot subdivision. But if it did ever connect through, you'd likely see the sharrows as opposed to bike lanes constructed.
Okay, any other questions for Jeremy? Is the applicant here or yes, would you like to come up and say something?
My name is Joseph Or, I'm with Blue and Associates. I'm here to represent the developer slash owner of the property. We're just looking to remove and downgrade the collector to a local street going through the subdivision, which is an eight-lot subdivision. It's large lots, and with no more traffic than we will be adding onto the, the property out there, there's not a whole lot of need for that, the large street going through the property for eight people.
Okay, any questions? Okay.
Hello, my name's Mike Parker. Just to kind of give you a little bit of background of what we got going on with this subdivision. I bought the Horse Stables to the north of it, which was part of the Gaddy property. It actually joins this on the north end on the east. We've got equestrian bridges there, which does therapeutic riding for autistic children. It's a, kind of a children's family horse center. I had a couple of folks ask, could they buy a couple of pieces of property on the south of this property? And we're in the county, we're just gonna do a one-lane little gravel private drive to it, that's what everybody wanted there. And as we got, went through this process, we're in the one-mile growth area for the city of Fayetteville, so that's why we're here. And it started to be a two-lane paved road, and as, as it developed through this subdivision process, it was discovered that there was, someone had an idea for a collector's street to go through here. I live directly south of this property, myself and all of our neighbors there, it's established where there's nothing else that can be developed there. The Horse Stables are to the north and the east of this. My other neighbor, Brian Shaw, owns twenty-three acres and just built his home directly east of it. He, he and some folks, I think, had the Altus Road, uh, uh, master street plan amended. No one wants to develop this into a, a major faster-traffic-type situation. For safety, everybody would rather it be a more of a, a little intimate subdivision residential. They just, the county just repaved Oakland Zion Road. It's probably sixteen to eighteen feet wide, since we're in the growth area, to do, to sell, there's, there's gonna be seven homes, it's all pre-sold, all real nice families with kids. No one wants a big, major road through there, and neither does the stables and all the neighbors around us. So, it's pretty well set out what's gonna be developed there for the foreseeable future, you know? It doesn't connect over to anything. There's Highway forty-five going east and west, Bridgewater and Gully Road all go east and west in a, more of a major street, but if thirty or fifty years from now, or a hundred years from now, two or three more properties between ours and, I guess, Gully Road, you'd have to go through the Sloan Estates for a collector here. It's like, it'd be like a road going from nowhere to nowhere as far as I can determine, so we're just requesting that we not, if, if it's a thirty-foot wide road, there's gonna be seven homes in there, and then one is already on Oakland Zion Road, they front there. So, we'll have seven homes in here, and if we had to build a thirty-foot wide road, it's just probably not gonna work, you know? So, anyway, that, that's where we've come to this stage. We kept selling a few more lots to do the paved road, and now it's gonna be curb and gutter, sidewalks, two acres of retention pond, quite, quite a, about seven-hundred thousand in infrastructure for seven homes without thirty-foot road. So, that's where we're at. Everybody says, you know, for their kids playing there, it's just a, a small little, I live just directly south of there, we have a one-lane gravel drive with four homes on it, very similar situation. So, we'd just ask y'all to help us with some, to me it seems common sense that that would be, it'll probably be a twenty or twenty-two foot wide road. And we don't mind doing the easement for whatever, but it just made sense to not be a thirty-foot wide road with curb and gutter sidewalks for seven homes.
But you're going to leave the, um, right-of-way?
I wouldn't mind doing that if that's what-
If you had to wipe it later.
Mm-hmm, in case somewhere down the road that could, you know? If that would ever, ever be, you know, it may be a hundred years from now, really, I mean, I can't even imagine with what's around there now, but anyway, we wouldn't mind doing a, a wider easement and, and build a normal residential street, and it'll just go in and dead-end right now.
Okay.
It's developed around it into more residential and agricultural.
Well, let's go ahead.
Well, I'm seeing this kind of as similar to what we faced earlier going north and south, and I didn't want that wide, right? And it's my understanding that the eight lots in this are already pre-sold, and so they're already platted, they're already, they're pre-sold.
That's correct.
So, we know that that's how it's gonna be at this point, so it's going to take an effort if someone comes in to change that in the future. And so I think that that's relevant. It is to me, just, I took the opportunity to go out and look at it, 'cause we do have an east and west problem, and we don't want to continue the east and west problem. But at the same time, it looks like if, even if you go on up, it's that Sagely that's out there and how it's being developed around there, that you are getting a, a community, a neighborhood, already developed along this direct area on both sides. So, if we, if we go in with the intent that's in here, instead of developing this area on both sides as it is being developed right now, it's cutting it in half. And so I think, I mean, I kind of see your point with the nature of the development, the way it's coming up through here, and also the topography of the area naturally. But knowing that they're pre-sold, that, I think that that matters a lot because you're, you're taking a pretty good hunk of that between Oakland Zion Road and Al, and Altus Road, and we can already see how that, how that's developed. I do think it's important that there's an understanding of the right-of-way, because that's where we've had problems in the future, whenever we've gone in later, you know? Salem Road, for instance, go out there and look what's gonna happen. But I kind of, I, just going out and looking around and walking through that, I, I kind of, I, I certainly see your point in the immediate development situation.
And if, I would say this, if it made sense, I mean, what, you can see what we're doing, they're gonna build, I mean, it's all probably half-million dollar to million-dollar homes, nice families.
That's what's over on Sagely, whenever you come on around Sagely. And so what I can see here is a real development of a community on either side of Sagely between Gully and Oakland Zion, and so-
You know, so-
I can, I can see your point of view at this, at this time in history.
And for the, for the future, which I know that's part of the job you have to look out for way into the future. If the normal residential street that we would like to build there to service these homes, if that right-of-way is fifty-foot, I'm, I'm not really sure on these numbers, and this collector's street requires a fifty-nine foot, would not mind one bit to go ahead at this time and plat that out as a fifty-nine foot right-of-way, just in case it was needed later down the road. But I, you know, seriously living there, I just can't imagine, you know, I, I try to get around as fast as I can too, and I just can't imagine cutting through there to save time to Oakland Zion. It's just, it doesn't make sense to me, having lived in there and drive that every day, but that, that's all I have to say. And I, I think quite a few of the folks that have pre-bought these lots, you know, waiting for all this to go through, came and talked at the planning commission, and I, I think, I've solved mine here, but a lot of them wanted to come, but-
Get to them just a minute.
Quick comment, maybe?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna open it up for public comment.
Okay. Is there anything else I might, I could answer, or?
Any, any questions, Mr. Park? Okay.
They just kind of took on a life of its, I wouldn't have planned to sell any of this really, but this, this has kind of developed this way, and the reason we're selling these seven lots is just because of the additional requirements of the city to get to there, so that's just where it's at. Thank you, thank you very much.
I just have a quick question about the right-of-way. You mentioned-
Yes.
Fifty-nine feet, a couple of other things. That's gonna go through the process though, if he's willing to look at the, at the right-of-way, then we'll have that upfront?
Yeah, just like we do on the road.
And that, that's really, that's really a decision before tonight, which cross-section to build and which right-of-way to dedicate. I've, I've heard some ideas tonight I think are definitely worth consideration, and I would, I would ask as, as one possible compromise is if the collector's street right-of-way were dedicated, the local street cross-section were built within that, so it reduces the cross-section, except at the intersection of Oakland Zion. Right at the intersection, just provide thirty feet for a future turn lane. That way, if this comes into the city at a later date, we don't have to go in and tear folks' yards and driveways up to be able to build that, and so-
At the intersection?
Just at the intersection.
Are you good with that?
I am, and Joe just mentioned to me on our plat that was, the preliminary plat that was approved, they actually put it in as a sixty-foot wide easement. So, I think we've already more than accommodated-
Now that we've had a right-of-way discussion, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it, 'cause, but I appreciate that, you're willing to do that.
I, I certainly think staff can support that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Is any other public comment on this?
Thank you. My name's Mike Wagner, my wife and I have purchased a lot out there, and one of the things that really attracted us to it initially was when you go out there, it's, it's really, it's just like a country setting, it's really quiet and peaceful out there, and it is, it's, it's, there's a lot of old trees and stuff in the area, and coming off of Oakland Zion, if you look at that, to really have a thirty-foot wide road, there's, you are out there, there's, I think there's two oak trees that flank it, they're probably a hundred years old, I mean, those things would have to go. And then even on up the road, the plat that they have, where the road goes through into the subdivision to make it that wide, there's a grove of trees, it's beautiful, that you, it's, I guess, it's proposed that it would go through there, you're gonna lose some of those trees too, so anyway, it's just, it's just a neat little area, it seems like it'd be a waste to put such a wide road out there, and considering the size of Oakland Zion and everything.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to address Sondra's?
Hi, my name's Trish Dick, and we are one of the families that are, Mr. Dorn?
How are you?
Good. We are one of the families that have bought a lot, and we are wanting to keep it very private, of course, like all of you would like to do as well, and I don't know if they mentioned, but the street that would be connecting, would be connecting from Sloan Estates back to the back of our property, and it just to us, you know, as owners, it doesn't make sense to connect one neighborhood to another tiny, just eight-lot neighborhood. I walked up the stairs, so I'm really breathing heavy. And we just want to keep it private, not a lot of traffic to come through our neighborhood, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who else would like to address Sondra's? Okay, bring you back to the council. What's thoughts to the council?
Mayor, I actually have kind of procedural question here. Their plat was approved for them not to have to build a collector, but their plat, their preliminary plat did show a right-of-way already that would allow a collector, is, is that correct?
Correct. That was a specific determination in the conditions by the planning commission.
Right.
In order to amend the master street plan, to downgrade it less than that, that's the council action.
Well, you know, if their preliminary plat was already approved with, without a collector being built, and I actually think that we probably could not constitutionally force them to build a collector, they only have-
There you go.
Seven houses, and you need, that's too much to require a developer for such a small number of units. We can require them to do a regular street, and, and it's very appropriate. I don't think we could require them actually construct it, and since they're willing at this point to grant the city the right-of-way, so that if sometime in the far distant future, which it's very hard to see when it would ever happen, but if we ever needed it, then we would have the right-of-way right then, and then the burden would be on the taxpayers to construct the rest of it, which is where it should be, because this, these are too small of a group of people to make them build that bigger road. We just can't constitutionally do that, so I'm just not sure if we even need to amend the master street plan, because, and maybe you can correct me, why we have to do this, if, if we are approving their plat where they're building the local street or the residential street, and getting the right-of-way for the collector's street, do we actually need to change the master street plan to allow someone to do that?
I think the technicality there is that the, the code section about master street plan states that you have to dedicate a specific right-of-way with a, when a master street plan crosses your street unless the council agrees with the planning commission in a recommendation that, that can be downgraded, so that's-
But they are dedicating a sufficient cross-section.
Right, that, that wasn't the case until tonight.
Oh.
So, that's the new, that's the new development tonight. So, it was shown, but I think they were not going to, they were asking to be reducing that entire, in its entirety.
So, with their statements tonight, I guess we don't even have to change the master street plan if we, but I guess we need to make sure that their plat showed the dedication. Is that, does your plat show that, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't you come up? No, just go to the speaker there, 'cause we wanted the people out home to see you too. So, you say the plat does show that, but, but does the plat also show where the street will be built?
Yes, sir.
And, and the street would be narrower on your plat than shown?
Uh, well, it-
Master street plan?
Yes, sir, it sure would. It'd be a twenty-seven foot wide, I do believe. Twenty-seven foot wide back curb, back curb with a sixty-foot.
Okay, and that's, at that point, this is what you recommend now, this is what you would like to do?
Yes, sir.
So, is that satisfactory with you, Jeremy?
It is.
Yes, yes, mister. Yeah, sure.
What I understood at the planning commission meeting, the road itself will be what's required for a, I'm not sure if they call it a minor subdivision, or it sounded like it was a twenty-foot wide street itself. And, and they said we'll have to go back to the planning commission to determine exactly what is required on that, but the right-of-way was a sixty-foot wide right-of-way. That's what I understood from that previous-
Do we have a cross-section for a twenty-foot wide road?
It was like a minor sub, I can't pick up an ad, but the county may, and so that may be the, that may be the confusion here, is that always within our planning area, you have to go through the city's process and the county's process. Our, generally our standards prevail within one mile of the city limits. The county's given us that authority, but, but I believe they have a, that may also be where the sixty-foot right-of-way is coming in, because we don't have a cross-section with sixty, they do, so that may be where you're, we're getting those, those figures from the county.
And, and our smallest street section would be a residential street, would it not, normally?
There's a local street, there's also a residential street.
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, I think that's a twenty-four foot back, back of curb cross-section. I don't remember correctly.
I, I could be wrong on the exact size, but I'm, I'm thinking it was, I was thinking it was twenty or twenty-two for the street itself, but that may not count the curbs, so that may be where some of this is, but- I recall it being wider than that, but I may be wrong.
You know, it might, this is a major investment, as you're talking about. It might make sense to wait a couple of weeks and have you get with planning, so we know exactly what the proposal is and what the city council can approve.
I would like to correct me on that also. Let's, let's see a cross-section.
Okay.
And that way we'd all be on the same page and know exactly what the proposal is, and whether the city council can then accept it without changing the master street plan, or do they need to change the master street?
Would it, I'm wondering time-wise, you know, on, we're so far behind on our timeframe, I wonder when would be our next opportunity?
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Actually, I think we'd probably meet on a Tuesday, so it'd be less than two.
Less than two.
Twelve days.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Alright.
I've, I've lost my-
Yeah. So, in the interim, we'd get back to- So in the interim, we'd get back with-
Thursday, Tuesday.
Planning Commission.
No, you don't have to go to the Planning Commission, but I want you to go to Planning Staff.
Okay.
And get every, all the little kinks worked out.
Yeah, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, on the exact size-
Right.
-of the street, okay.
So we need to motion to table.
Yes, to the next meeting.
I move. Second.
Yeah, a motion to second to table for two weeks, correct?
Yes.
All right.
And I would encourage the city, if you go out there, you can go into, over into the Sagely from the other side and see it, and from Oak Zion, exactly what he was saying. It's wooded, it's, well, there's pastoral area I'm part of, and then there's a wooded area, so you can see what he's talking about, as far as preserving the tree canopy in this neighborhood.
Yeah, I bet, out there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We have a motion to second to table. Any final comments or any discussion on that? All righty. Sundarich, would you please call the row?
Long?
Gray? Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hedy?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Okay. Well, that concludes our business tonight. Is there any announcements?
I do have some announcements, Mayor. This Sunday, November ninth, at two-thirty PM on the downtown Fayetteville Square, the